Good afternoon, I'm Doug Don, Chairman of the School Board. With that, I'm going to call this regular monthly meeting to order today. It's Tuesday, January 9th, 2018, it's 4 o'clock in the afternoon. We welcome all of you here to our meeting. And Mrs. Counts has our opening exercises today, so I'm going to turn it over to Sandy Counts.
And obviously, it's Rock Crusher Day. I did Top Ten Speeches at Rock Crusher at the end of December, and Assistant Principal Furnas told me that there were 70 kids in the chorus, and I said, "You've gotta be kidding." And then he said some very, very kind words about your importance, Mr. Manning. And so I said, "I know it's the last day of your Christmas holiday, but do you think you could get some kids to come and do your Ba-Hamba show that they did in Christmas? You did a Halloween concert. How many more do you have planned for the year, three or four?" Just one? I meant there's more. But I just think any teacher, no matter what the curriculum, that can take 20 students and in a very short period of time make his class 70 students needs to be recognized as one of our outstanding teachers in Citrus County. We only got about 70, not all 70, but we brought, what, 10 or 12? And so they're going to do a couple of the songs from the Ba-Hamba concert that they did for Christmas. I assume some of you sitting in the audience know some of these singers. Thank you for raising such great kids. I'll turn it over to Mr. Manning. Yes?
First, I'd like to thank the Citrus County School Board, Ms. Hamel, Mr. Mullins, and all the county directors and staff for having us here today. It's a great privilege and honor to showcase the talents of our amazing students, and thank you for your continued support in the arts. We did a show on the 19th called Ba-Hamba, and it kind of focuses on the negative side of Christmas, but like in a funny way. And I always tell my students that the first song and the last song are the most important. You get those right, everything else is just icy kind of thing. And so, we're gonna perform the first song and the last song. So you can see how we started and where we go. Spoiler alert, we do eventually find our Christmas spirit. I'd also like to say that I'm very proud of my students. I'm able to give back to the community. And besides music, I also teach my kids to be very patriotic. And so, we don't charge for our shows. All that we ask is that people give donations, and we give all that money to the Honor Flight Charity, which sends veterans up to Washington DC, and they can see their memorials from WWII and the Korean War, and eventually they'll move on to Vietnam War. And it costs $500 for a veteran to go, and I'm proud that over the last four or five years, we've been able to send free veterans up to Washington. So we want to thank our veterans, because if it wasn't for them, we wouldn't have the freedoms to sing Christmas. Alright kids, places please. This first song is called "The Twelve Pains of Christmas." Alright, so as the students get their props ready, I believe nothing says Christmas like Charles Schultz's "Peanuts Tree." So, let's hear what Charlie Brown has to say about Christmas.
I think there's something wrong in your honor. I mean, I think there's something wrong in your honor. I just wonder if Christmas, I mean, I might be giving presents, and Christmas is already taking the trees, and I'm still doing those both of you. However, you're the only person I have who's deployed, who's ever been to a club, who's been to a scene, who's been to a banquet, who's been to a party.
So having just got through the holiday season, I hope none of you experienced these twelve pains, but if you did, you can relate to it.
The first thing at Christmas that's such a pain to me is finding a Christmas tree. The second thing at Christmas that's such a pain to me bringing up the lights and finding a Christmas tree. The third thing at Christmas that's such a pain to me leftovers, bringing up the lights and finding a Christmas tree. The fourth thing at Christmas that's such a pain to me sending Christmas cards, leftovers, bringing up the lights and finding a Christmas tree. The fifth thing at Christmas that's such a pain to me five months of bills. Sending Christmas cards, leftovers, bringing up the lights and finding a Christmas tree. The sixth thing at Christmas that's such a pain to me mending my in-laws five months of bills.
I hate those Christmas cards. I'm never eating turkey again. Bringing up the lights and finding a Christmas tree. The seventh thing at Christmas that's such a pain to me the sale of ancient or pieces mending my in-laws five months of bills.
Oh, mailing out these Christmas cards. I'm trying to bring up these lights!
And finding a Christmas tree. The eighth thing at Christmas that's such a pain to me
I want a drink, I want a for Christmas!
Donation! And what do you mean, your in-laws?
Five months of bills.
Yo ho, sending Christmas cards!
Why did we buy twenty-five?
What? We have no extension course!
And finding a Christmas tree. The tenth thing at Christmas that's such a pain to me
Finding parking spaces.
I want candy!
Get it, jogger!
Five months of bills.
I don't even know how these people, okay, wisdoms have where?
One light goes out, they all go out!
And finding a Christmas tree. The eleventh thing at Christmas that's such a pain to me
Batteries not included!
Parking spaces.
I hear yours is a bathroom!
Charity!
She's a witch I hate, uh!
Five months of bills.
Sending Christmas cards.
I should've used a rain wrap. Why are they all blinking?
And finding a Christmas tree. The eleventh thing at Christmas that's such a pain to me
Sale TV specials, batteries not included!
Finding parking spaces.
Finding something!
Charity!
Mending my in-laws
Five months of bills.
Oh, more Christmas cards? I'd rather just throw it all away!
Bringing up these lights!
And finding a Christmas tree. The twelfth thing at Christmas that's such a pain to me
Singing Christmas carols!
Yeah! Singing Christmas carols!
Sale TV specials, batteries not included!
Finding parking spaces.
Ah!
It's not with the cow already!
Gotta make 'em dinner!
Five months of bills.
I'm not sending them here this year, and that's it!
Leftovers!
Fine, you're so smart, you bring up the lights!
And finding a Christmas tree.
So after that, we sang a bunch of songs that are negative, grumpy, like "You're a Mean One, Mr. Grinch," "I'm Getting Nothing for Christmas," the boys did a funny song called "The Restroom Door Said Jump", which was about a restroom sign that got switched to, it was really the girls' room when they went in. And the girls finished with "Where Are You, Christmas?", the song from the Grinch movie. And that was kind of a turning point, because it starts negative, "Where are you, Christmas? Why can't I find you?", but then the final chorus is "I found you, Christmas", and it's all happy, and so we ended on a happy note. Charlie Brown, you like this?
Have you found your Christmas spirit yet, Charlie Brown?
Not really. You were right, you were right, I like this. I do make Christmas calls every year. I guess it just doesn't seem Christmas is all about. Does anybody know what Christmas is even about?
Sure, Charlie Brown, I can say what Christmas is all about. When there were in the same country, the troops divided into two, people watched the war cry. The old angel of glory came upon them, and the glory of the Lord showed right on the back. The angels swore prayer, and the angel said unto them, "Fear not, for we hope that bringing you tigers and great clothes will help you. For unto you in this day and this season, David, a savior, which is Christ, and his shall be assigned unto you, and he shall find you in deep breaths, swallowing all that he has given you. Everything there is an angel with the most tuned, and every praise and guard between joy and time, and all that is good and good and good. That's what Christmas is all about."
Joy to the world! Joy to the world! Joy to the world, the Lord is come. Let the earth receive her peace. Let every heart prepare him room. In heaven and in earth, heaven and nature, heaven and nature, heaven and nature, and heaven, heaven, nature, sing. Joy to the world! Joy to the world! Joy to the world, the Savior reigns. Let the earth receive her peace. Let the sun and fields and floods, rock hills and plains, repeat the sounding joy. Repeat the sounding joy after he be. Repeat the sounding joy. Joy to the world that we sing. Let the earth receive her peace. Joy to the world that we sing. Let the earth receive its name. Joy to the world that we sing. Let the rivers and songs that flow. Joy to the world that we sing. Repeat the sounding joy. He rules the world with truth and grace, and makes the nations prove, nations prove, and glories of his riches, and wonders of his love, and wonders of his love, and wonders of his love, wonders of his love, and wonders of his love. Joy to the world that we sing. Let the earth receive her peace. Joy to the world that we sing. Let the angel voices ring.
Thank you so much for having us once again and for your support.
And Mr. Manning, while you're still at the microphone, I'd be glad to lead us in a pledge, we'd be proud of you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which we serve, and to this land, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And special thanks to the children, as you can tell, we're proud. This is their last official day of their new Christmas break in their fear to do this for us. I'm so proud of you kids, thank you so much. And thank you to Mr. Furnas, he was the one that said he had a teacher on campus, but had 70 kids in his chorus, and I thought maybe he was a little emotional. But he does, they're wonderful, very wonderful.
Yes, parents and students, thank you so much for coming. Mr. Manning is a fine example of the quality of the teachers we have here in Citrus County. And compassion is very obvious, so here, we appreciate all the people. Thank you, sir. Okay, members, we're gonna continue on with the meeting. Is there a motion to approve the agenda recommended by the superintendent? A motion by Mrs. Powers, second by Mrs. Bryant, to adopt the agenda as recommended by the superintendent. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion passes five to zero, and the agenda is adopted. I will be following the order here pretty well, as far as the agenda goes. We're going to be at item number two, number two, citizen comments. There are copies, I believe, of the agenda in the back. There's also citizen comment cards that we have here. We welcome our citizens, and we welcome the public to come in and make comments or ask us questions, and this is one of those times, right now, we have it, the start of the meeting, and we'll have another one at the end of the meeting. So with that, are there any citizen comments? Okay? Any citizen comments from anyone who'd like to fill out a form or say anything at this time? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna move on. And I would like to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, item number three.
Approve it.
Second.
That was a motion by Mrs. Bryant, a second by Mr. Kitten, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion passes five to zero, and the proof of the consent agenda has been approved. We would like to have the recognition of donations. If you would do that, please, Mr. Rollin.
A $1,000 donation to Forest Ridge Elementary Schools of Beverly Hills Lions Foundation. A $1,500 donation to Marine Science Station from Nature Coast Lady English. A $500 donation to Crystal River High School of St. Anne's, Mississippi. A $1,000 donation to Crystal River High School of Joseph O'Fattah Senior Trust. That fills Mrs. Hamel, Chairman, and members of the board, $4,000.
Thank you very much, and as usual, we see another fine example of the community support that we have, so we definitely appreciate the money that's been donated to our schools. We'll move to item number four, presentation, and that is to recognize La Canto High School's academic team. Mrs. Hamel?
Good afternoon. I actually have the honor of recognizing two outstanding groups of students for you this afternoon. First is La Canto High School's Academic Challenge Team. They placed first in the district. They are coached by Mr. Ty Hamilton, and they have now the running record of nine years of placing first in our district. So they're going to continue to hold on to that Academic Traveling Trophy, and today we're going to present them with a new sub-plate to add to that trophy. So, Mr. Hamilton and La Canto, your students.
Yes, come on down. Come on down.
Good job. The second group that we're recognizing this afternoon also has to do with the Academic Challenge Team. At the end of their regular season, we held a district competition. For each high school, sent six of their team members to compete for a position on our district team, which in Ekal will compete at Disney for the statewide competition. At the end of the challenge, we have six students who will be coached by Mr. John McNeil. These students are Nicholas Camplo from Crystal River High School. Today, we're gonna present them with their team shirt. Colton Pazinski from La Canto High. We also have Laura Haynes from La Canto High. You're so welcome. Dennis Gwen from La Canto High. Welcome. Warren Parr from Crystal River High. And Jason Zavilla from La Canto High. And our district team competing in Orlando at Disney in Ekal.
Okay, we're gonna move to item number six, School Support Services, Mr. Bishop.
Good afternoon. I'd like to request the board's approval of the instructional support recommendations of that line of borderline. As you take a moment to peruse it, I'd like to lift up one name that's in the audience today, and that's Mr. Doctor Mike Gettis. You'll see that Mr. Gettis is retiring in June, and I was smart as that. Spotlight him for the service he's provided Citrus County schools for many, many years, and tough shoes to fill, very, very tough shoes.
Hopefully, this home phone number for me, so I can call.
Oh, that's part of the interview process, can they do?
Is there a motion?
I need to approve the instructional and support. Thank you, I was looking for the other word. I got that.
Our new motion by Mrs. Powers, a second by Mrs. Counts, to approve the instructional and support recommendations. Have they been answered questions? Seeing none?
I forgot to miss you. It's time to reconsider, we've got three, four seconds here.
Well, we have one, we're free for a second, I think it doesn't take a few. Yeah, we'll just wait till like the week before. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. The opposed motion passes five to zero. Thank you, Mr. Bishop.
The next item on the agenda is the request approval of renewal bid number 201541, shredded mulch to Bowling Forest Products Incorporated.
Okay, we move to item number seven. This is an item that I had some questions about that have been answered, but I still felt like it was valid for us to just discuss it in front of the board. And so, Mr. Stokes is here, I appreciate that. This is one of those bids that we do twice a year. Obviously, we're spending in the neighborhood of $100,000 for mulch, and I just wanted to make sure we were clear on the process that we do to bid this, and I wanted to make sure we're clear on the safety issues behind, the reason why we have to spend this kind of money on mulch. It's to protect our children from the playgrounds, and something I don't think we can do without. I don't think there's any way, and I've had a good discussion with Mr. Stokes, but I just would like him, if he could, to come up and explain a little bit to us about this process, because it is something that is bid every six months versus annually, and we did get a bid, there is another bidder here, that I just wanted you to kind of review.
Yes, sir. The highlights, the bidding process, Ms. Wilson can perform, come here. It's actually a three-year lock with six-month renewals on it, and it's been that way since 2005. Process is based upon, whether we agree or disagree, that mulch is a commodity. I'm not sure where I stand on that portion. The reason bids are locked that way, speaking with Mr. Colasani, is we couldn't get the bidders in the past to do it. They would bid on the six-month renewal, and we as the school board have the right of refusal on that renewal as well, so it's not, it's a two-way straight on the block. To date, we've never had them ask for an increase on it. They've always honored the six months. This bid will come up again in six months, and will go out for another three-year cycle, at which point we will try to solicit new bidders, new companies, processes like that. We do put it in 13 sites around the district. The mulch, every year, we freshen it up over summer, meeting the minimal standards set by risk management. It is a, it's a nine-inch compaction, 12-inch total, freshened up, and it's done at the end of the summer window, so it's fresh for the school years. Questions?
Eric, I know in the past, we've looked at, we have, I think it...
Eric, I know in the past, we've looked at, we have, I think it crest, we have a an actual permanent material.
Yes, sir.
But it's quite expensive per square foot, and it doesn't come without its challenges of maintaining it and having to, when it does deteriorate, and it will.
Correct.
It's quite expensive, then, of course, to have to go back and do it. So I think this, the mulch option has been, over the, at least the decade or more that I've been looking at this, has been more cost-effective.
It is. It's not a cheap option. We do require it for the fall zone protection. We have standards that set by risk management that we have to follow on that, so that's all we do is freshen and maintain. We did years ago, as a cost option, look at the synthetic-type products on Inverness Primary School when we redid the playground, as some of you recall on there, and it was, the costing was not even really reasonable. And then there's the long-term maintenance associated with that as well.
Now, during the Christmas holidays, during the break, are there some more applications that occurred during that time?
Not with mulch, no, sir.
Okay. And if there is a problem at school, whether it's been a washout, or there's been mulch that's been worn and taken away, is there responsibility in school to re-rake it?
To the extent, yes, sir. The fall zones, places of playgrounds, they're supposed to do an assessment on a daily basis from the administrative standpoint, make sure the playgrounds where the kids swing, places like that, that they're safe to rake back in. Yes, sir.
And if there was a storm that caused the lot to be washed away, they'd obviously account your maintenance.
We would address that on a case-by-case basis, yes, sir, and we would, from the maintenance. If it was a large amount of quantity, we would deal with that.
And we're still pretty sure that that's the six-month renewal is still standard in the industry?
It, being relatively new to this position, from what I know it is, we will reevaluate that. We are taking all the bids as we get to them now, as they renew. This one comes up, I believe, in August, if I'm not mistaken, and we will look through the whole process again. We've actually been looking at some other alternative vendors, people to bid with. We'll reach out. Can't make them provide numbers, is the problem, as you saw.
Oh, yes, that's true. Yes, sir. And, Mr. Kitten, you brought up a good point with the artificial, the term for mulch, with the cost that's associated with that. So, there is a standard for the mulch that is blown into the playground or placed in restaurants, if correct. Are there any questions?
No, I was just familiar with it because I remember when it first was done at Crystal River High School for Dana Fields' child care, we were told that she had to change the artificial mulch to save her children. It's been a lot of work since then, and it's not good in the Crystal River Park.
Okay. Any other motion?
I move approval of renew of bid 2015-41 shredded mulch to broiling forest products incorporated.
We have a motion by Mr. Kitten, a second by Mrs. Powers, to approve the renewal of bid 2015-41. Is there any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Thank you, Mr. Stokes. Okay, we're to item number nine, citizen comments. Do we have any citizen comments? Anyone like to come before the board? Okay, item number ten, our attorney, legal matters, Mr. Bradshaw. Item number eleven, approval of the minutes.
I move approval. Second?
Motion by Miss Bryant, a second by Miss Counts, to approve the minutes. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Same side, or say nay? Motion passes five to zero. Our next item, item number twelve, board member committee reports. We're going to start, though, down there with Mr. Mullin. We'll go right down the line. Mr. Mullin, do you have anything for us? Okay. Miss Bryant?
I survived. I'm back. I enjoyed our Christmas party. It was quite festive. And ready for the ground weather.
I've said a couple things.
Oh, please.
Ms. Harris?
Just to, I want to have a one blue, and the reason is for recognition of National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, which is January the ninth. And they have reviews. It is, yes. Yes. He suggested, went along with that, and said, nationwide, there's an average of two-hundred-and-three officers who are killed in the line of duty in a year, nationwide. There are fifty thousand who are assaulted in a year, fourteen thousand who are injured in the line of duty, and then unfortunately, some officers who the stress is just too much. So, I think all of us want to say to our officers, thank you so very much, and y'all do a great job, you protect us, and we really appreciate it. And exactly, Ms. Mullin, maybe you wanted to?
Well, I appreciate those comments. Certainly, we want to make sure our students show respect for authority, and we have laws and rules that we live by. We have, you know, we have rules and code of conduct and schools that we live by, and so I think that's an important part. Law enforcement Memorial Day is in May, and that's one of the things that we do take part in in this community with the service, and the Darleos, and Sheriff's Office, and the Highway Patrol. And so, that's a great time to, to remember those men and women who serve us, to protect us. So, thank you, Ms. Powers.
While we're on that subject, I'd like to say that I think as a country, we've gotten away from, I'm talking about adults, about children, we've gotten away from respecting those for authority, from our president all the way down to our dog catchers. If you're in authority, you deserve respect, and says so in life. That's recharge.
And I'll add something to. I still have little goosebumps when I remember the Tropicana speech that we heard several months ago, from the daughter of one of our City's county deputies, and I wondered why we had two deputies there, but one deputy standing back there as the dad's. And I thought, gee, I'd like to take that speech and, that's an example of shifting to him, because it started out humorous and then it ended with, my daddy coming home tonight. But I never forgot, that speech was awesome.
Ms. Powers, do you have anything else?
Yes. I did a little guest column for the newspaper on mental health, and y'all know that that's the has-been, always will be, and is your guest for me. I have a counselor, and I was a mental health therapist, and I think there's so much of underlies problems in the school system, in our community, can be part of, or it parts back to the mental health of our people. And it does not mean in mental health that a person has to, has a horrible serious issue going on. It, they're everyday issues that all of us have, but some they pile up to such an extent that become overwhelming. And in the community, in the, in the school system, we have people in this system who deal not only with guidance and giving courses to people, but also with the problems that people have. And we have a few, we need some more personally, and that's going to be my push this year, to get some more into helping students, because I've worked very closely with the one-on-one with students, and I know how serious the problems are there. I'm sometimes shocked at, just to find out just how serious the problem is with kids and children who go there, and don't have parents. I don't have anyone interested in their well-being whatsoever. So I want the school circle to do more, and I think we do an excellent job now, but also I want the community to get more involved, to, to recognize the fact that, hey, these are problems, and the only way that they're going to get solved is for people to be there to help solve those problems, to have more people at the centers, to have more people throughout the community and different organizations, and they have to be funded. So I'm hoping that the people listening now, the people that are here, the school board, all of us will be behind funding and helping with more mental health personnel to be able to help with the problems that all people have in the unit of society. I gave you the article that I put in the paper as a guest column. Hope you read it, and then I'll back all mental health issues to get more people to help. So that's, that's my, that's the article.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Ms. Counts?
December was a flash of a fan between book fairs, science fairs, Tropicana speeches. I'm dying to find out who's going to Tropicana speeches. I judged a couple of them. Awesome. Awesome kids coming up. Okay, I'd like to see them. And then holidays hit, and they were gone. Here we sit, but I'm glad to see Chris back.
Yeah, absolutely.
Sorry to see Mike go. But he got you for a few more months. Yeah, so glad to see you, Chris. Welcome back.
Mr. Kitten?
A couple of things. First, some information. There's a bill that has been introduced, HB 427, Instructional Personnel and Student Administrative Salary Schedule, and it's actually co-sponsored by Dr. Mizzoula. This bill would end state mandate for teacher merit pay, and it would actually revert it to school districts should they choose to want to operate it, but it would end the mandate in the state of Florida.
Sure.
So I am most encouraged by this bill's introduction. It is introduced by Republican Renee "Coach P" Placenta, and co-sponsored by Dr. Mizzoula. There is a companion bill, although not identical. I think it would be aligned if they could come to a decision on it. And it is encouraging to, to see that come about. Hopefully, this is beginning to end the experiment of using teachers' sal, students' tests on teachers' salaries, so I hope that that does pass. Two things that I want to do address. One, I'll probably be, or actually, I'll be mentioning it again at our public hearing at 5:30, but I wanted to just prepare you for my suggestion. We have a policy, and I apologize that I didn't pull it and discuss it when we had it on our consent agenda, but it is Policy 3.60, the flag to display and pledge, and it's approval of a revision. One of the things that's being proposed is the language adding that pursuant to Florida statute 1003.44, and then it goes into what was passed last legislative session. I am asking or encouraging this board that we perhaps table that vote and ask that staff insert another section, include another section of that statute, which states, and this is in statute, 1003.44 states, "When the national anthem is played, students and all civilians shall stand at attention, men removing their headdress, except when such headdress is worn for religious purposes." And then it goes into the section of our, of our current policy as, as it's being proposed. This would be nothing more than including what is in statute in our policy, which is what I understand has been what we have been adhering to, or having our students adhere to, because as sworn constitutional officers, we do have an obligation to uphold statute. So I will, at the 5:30 hour, make a motion to table that, and if this board decides, you can decide that at that time. I think that's correct. Mr. Bradshaw, that would be the time to do that?
Yeah, have to do it during.
During the public hearing. But I kind of just want, didn't want to waste these times at that time.
So that would just be adding, where it says the pledge of allegiance, you would be adding the national anthem?
It would be just adding where it says pursuant to, and our attorney, I'm sure, can, can come with the specific language if this board is so directed, but it would be just where it says pursuant to Florida statute 1003.44, and then inserting that sentence.
Another option is that you could, you know, proceed with the vote on that, and if you want, you could always have the next meeting, then the policy again approved for advertising, and you'd already have this policy just amended one time, that, and the other language.
That would be okay, too.
Because that, that language comes right out, the language that's in there is right out of the statute.
Right.
Basically, you're saying, you know, let's pull it down and not, not deal with it right now, add more language. But if the board agrees with that language, you can approve the policy. And then, at the next meeting, if the board were asked to be our staff to draft language, like you just said, that can be presented at the next meeting as, you know, to amend the policy again, approved for advertising. It's going to go out for thirty days with the advertising, so then, whatever board being after that, you approve that policy.
And we'd have to put out policies in the board's circle that's just directly?
If it comes, if it comes, certainly, if I get staff.
But today, we approve that they have to.
Today, we just could approve it then as the, as the current one, and then we can then.
And we've done that.
And what's the amendment? We may want to put national anthem in the title?
Well, and that would be my, that would have been the other thing, yeah. It would change it to flag, display, comma, pledge, and national anthem. But is this board interested in?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
So then, what I, then I would, then I, then what I'll do then is, is, if maybe we can then put this into the next agenda then, and I think following Mr. Bradshaw's suggestion, and then we'll, at the 5:30, we'll go to approve it as it is. Thank you, board members. The, the only other thing that I, that I did want to bring up, and, and I think that this was well-intended, but I, I do have a concern about a change in our agenda as we've done it. And I, following the meeting, I've given this a lot of thought, and I appreciate the chairperson's direction to, to do this, but it has to do with the time certain being removed from the second opportunity for the public to speak. It's been the tradition of this board to have a time certain for the second opportunity, because the first opportunity is to speak on anything that is on the agenda. But the second opportunity is for any member of the public to come and speak on any issue. And, and I know, over the years, we have very few people that take advantage of that, and I understand that. Usually, it's when there's a specific issue that someone has. But I believe that we are here to serve the public, and I think that it's important that when the public does want to speak, that there's a clear time when they can come forward and know they'll be heard. I went through looking at the times that we've had. There's very few times where we've really sat and waited. We're going to wait again tonight until 5:30 anyway, we'll probably finish. There's been a couple of other times, but I think that it's important that we make it clear to the public that we want them to be heard, and we don't want them to have to just wonder when they're going to come, that they actually know, okay, at 5:15, it's on the agenda for them to speak. So I am suggesting that this board reconsider the current change, because I really do believe that we are being more transparent to ensure that the public has an opportunity to speak. It's been an issue that the legislature has addressed, the county commission has struggled with this issue to ensure that there was proper opportunity. I don't think it's a lot for us to just make sure that we have a time certain for the public. So I don't know how the rest of you feel, but I do feel that that's, that that's an issue.
Well, Mr. Kitten, with that being said, I mean, I don't think there is any impression. Matter of fact, I think I've been very welcoming of public comment, and if we wanted to take it one step further, we could have public comment after every agenda item, and there's other boards that do that. And so that would be another option. If, if we, you know, I don't, I don't think what you're saying is that we're limiting public discussion. As a matter of fact, I welcome that, and I encourage that. But for us to give a time certain time when other items can come up after the time certain that people would want to speak about, I feel like it's important that we give that opportunity at the end of the meeting. So I think by law, Mr. Bradshaw, you can correct me if I'm wrong, we have to have a time for public comment prior to agenda items.
You have to have a public time to speak on the agenda.
On the agenda items, okay? And so with that, that is what we do to start our meetings, is we have a process. Is that right, Mr. Bradshaw?
Yeah, and that's what we have, that's the, come speak when you have a time.
And so we've never violated the, the public trust as far as having the opportunity for people to come and speak at our meeting, exactly.
Not as far as speaking on the agenda, every, no. Not at all.
Okay. So if we have meetings that last longer than an hour or two hours, then my feelings were that we give the public a chance to speak at the end of the meeting. They have the law met with speaking at the beginning of the meeting to any agenda item. They have the law met with speaking at the beginning of the meeting to any agenda item. But I would go as far to say as, if this board would want to have public comment after every item on the agenda, I welcome that.
I don't know. I remember a couple of meetings where we had the time certens and we had to interrupt somebody else's presentation to stop that time certain. And it breaks your train of thought when you're trying to concentrate on what you're doing. And we only did it a couple of times. But maybe we could take it even a step further when we know we have this agenda and we know what's going to go on consent. If we could time our agenda, then maybe the public could be there. And I doubt if we would ever deny somebody that said, "I want to come and talk about that issue, but I can't get there until 5:10. Can I speak at 5:10 or 5:30?" And I don't think.
If you're following your procedures, you can't do that.
Yeah, but if they wanted to conclude an agenda, then they missed that time certain. He covered it on the agenda item because they come back later at 5:30 and cover it.
And I'm saying that if you're following your procedure, you are now diverting from that. And then at any time, really what you're saying is that you're changing your entire policy.
Well, there's not a written policy on this, though.
You are changing it from.
There. For which we have, correct? For open public comment time certain?
No, open public comment is the second time. So then at this point, we would need to correct that and go back to a time certain.
It could be whatever time.
Correct. And we do change it from agenda to agenda based on what's going to be on that agenda. But.
Why don't we look at the policy and have discussion after every item on the agenda?
If you want to propose that, Mr. Dodd, that's fine. But my specific thing was that it was changed to not have any specific time. And my concern was addressing that, which is on the current agenda, to specifically say that I think we need to go back to at least a time certain. Now, if you're wanting to expand that, that's going in exactly the different direction than what you had proposed at the last meeting.
Let me ask a clarification to Mr. Bradshaw. Can we ask for public comment after every agenda item without having time certain? And does that allow? No. It must be a time certain?
That's good. We have to have, we have to allow the public the opportunity to speak on the time certain. This board is all you chose to have the meeting, have the adoption of the agenda. You have the public to come and speak on the agenda. Other organizations do it differently, like the County Commission and thus far the media.
Yes, yeah. People get up and speak with whatever.
On every meeting. So we have always taken the approach that, you know, our agenda is more, is more. People can talk, they can talk on the agenda. And they get a chance to speak. And at the end of the meeting, we have open public comment. So there's two times. One, to speak about it, things are on the agenda. The second, to speak about what are the thoughts.
And I think the County Commission is now limited to time. Because I remember school board meetings, we were sitting here until 8:00, 9:00, 10:00, 9:00. Totally. That's way past my bedtime.
Our policy is to. With the chair, we're having some discretion, there's additional time if necessary.
But if you're stating that we need to have a time certain for open comment, then that would indicate that at the next agenda, there should be a time certain for the second opportunity.
It says a time certain.
So now, if you're wanting to address then a change to the policy, then that's something you can do. I'm just saying that we were, we at this point were not providing that opportunity. I understand what the purpose was. I think that it's important that when, and I know Ms. Burdarami, over the years, gets these phone calls that says, "What time can I show up to talk about and speak before the board on an issue?" Because they do want to know when they can speak. And that's why there are time certens. That's why we interrupt certain things, so that there are time certens. So yes, it does, there are occasions when it does interrupt train of thought. But that's to ensure that the public has that opportunity.
The time certain can be at any point in time.
No, it can be.
You can have a word to speak about, you know, you can put a time to the agenda at 4:00, 4:15. If you're bothering anything else, the board, maybe at 4:15.
Absolutely.
If any point in time, it does say add.
But I think it's important that the public has that opportunity and knows when that opportunity. Knows when that opportunity is, not just that we have the opportunity. Because at this point, for example, today, many times historically, it would have been at the 5:00 to 5:30 hour. Well, today, that opportunity was at 4:30. So if someone didn't know we'd made that change and they came, you know, thinking at 5:00 o'clock, they'd be able to speak before us, they would not have that opportunity.
Mr. Bradshaw, can the board have a public input on anything that's on the agenda at 4:15? And then at 4:30, have a public input on anything that's not on the agenda? And then have a final public input at the end of the agenda, like what Mr. Dodd's asking for?
Sure, absolutely.
Because I think what Mr. Dodd was saying is he wanted people to be able to comment on something if it occurred after 5:15.
And that would be fine.
I understand.
So you could do both. You could have three public comment sections. Get both of your time certens out of the way at the beginning of the meeting and then still have a final one at the. And, you know, maybe this would be a good item to workshop. We don't have a lot of items on our workshop agenda next, or this month. I think it'd be a great item to workshop. And honestly, when I met with the superintendent and staff and Mr. Bradshaw, you were in that meeting. You know, I certainly wish that legal advisor would have been able to know our policy to be able to tell me that it has to be time certain. And you were in that meeting with me and Mrs. Hemel and executive staff. And you failed to notify me on that when we discussed it openly. So I am disappointed in that. I will not violate the public trust. And we, if we have to have time certain times, we'll have it. But, Mr. Bradshaw, I want to tell you, that's your job as legal advisor to make sure that we are running the board according to our policy. This would be a great topic to workshop. I think it is at the pleasure of the chair to workshop. I do like what Mr. Mullen has said about having a time certain with an additional time at the end. And we can certainly look at that. But I think it's a good discussion to have and see if we would want to have public comment after every item. Our meetings are very short now. So if we were to open it up after every item, we can certainly give the impression and make sure people know that we've welcomed their discussion. We want their input and their feedback. Mrs. Bryant.
The only thing that I was wanting is for it to be after 5:00. At least one after 5:00. Because I know a lot of people who work, you can tell they did here. Will we have to 5:00?
Are we saying 5:00? Would you think 5:00 would be good, or are you saying 5:15?
I'm not saying. I'm saying that's something we need to workshop.
Okay, right, okay.
This policy came about that very reason because we used to meet at 2:00, then we got it free, and then we, the board moved it to 4:00. And then public input, they felt like should be at 5:30 because if only people working at 5:00 shouldn't have time to get off work to come. And the public also, and Mr. Kennedy is correct on this, people can call and request a time certain to speak. They can call and say, "I want to speak on, you know, something that bothered me," and we can still give them a time certain. So the public can still call, request to do that. But the policy was developed because board members felt like the public needed to know what time to go.
And I think historically, the teachers were the ones that backed it up, too, because they said, "We're discussing, you know, my livelihood, and I'm still in the classroom." So that's another reason that they backed up time, so that the teachers could.
That was something that, on the first day. Well, that was actually when I ran. The first thing, nomination that I made was to change the time to 4:00. And Ms. Bryant was the person that seconded that and.
So workshop would be good.
Yeah, we can workshop it.
And everybody can come up with what probably is right time.
Okay, and Mr. Bradshaw, you can have those. Maybe it would be good for Mr. Bradshaw to be at the workshop then, too.
And then the last item that I have is, I noticed today that the approval of the budget amendment number three was on our consent agenda. I thought those were automatic pulls for the budget amendment. Has something changed?
They haven't been.
They haven't been?
No.
Okay. I don't know how this board feels, but I was under the impression that we were pulling those as automatics.
You know, Mr. Kennedy, that workshop.
I think then we need to talk about that because those are, you know, some of, again, you know, I don't believe, I think it's good to have concise meetings. Since I've been on the board, I think we've always had concise meetings. But I don't need to finish a board meeting in an hour if we need to discuss items. And I think it's important for us to be aware of certain items. And I think budget is, to me, always one. So I would think that that's another item that would be good to workshop.
Yes. Can we finish our updates? Is that all right? Or do you need an announcer? Okay. I was gonna.
And that's it?
I was gonna have, we're gonna call for an executive session, too, so we can discuss the items. So we'll take a break before that. That's it. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. So I do have some things to go over. As we are all aware, our students start back tomorrow. Teachers came back yesterday, and today is a professional adult today, I believe. So I'm sure a lot of good things are getting done. Youth Leadership Citrus had a program today and next month on February 13th. They have a program on government and education. So they'll be here at the school board for a short period of this with Mrs. Hemel. And then they'll be going with Hoochie Technical College for lunch. And it's a great time that we have to showcase some programs at WTC. So that is going to be next month with Youth Leadership Citrus. Monday is Martin Luther King Day. There is a unity walk I'll invite you all to come to in Inverness. It's 8:30. We meet at the Valerie Theater. And we're going to walk down Liddney Park here in Inverness. I do believe, though, Mr. Kennedy, you had another event.
Yeah, I've got, actually, I'm coaching at a swim meet.
Oh, no, I thought you'd sent us something on M.L., Martin Luther King Day, Crystal River, is that?
It was the Crystal River parade. And I asked last year if I could come over and do the walk here and still make it to the parade in Crystal River. And most people said, "Probably not." So I'd already made a commitment to the parade. But I could have made it.
Dan Epstein.
So we can do both.
Yeah, Dan Epstein is the one that said that.
I haven't seen anything other than the parade.
I haven't heard that since.
They had a great picnic there. But we can do both. Because I think the parade in Crystal River starts at 10:30.
Okay. And then on Friday, January 19th, we have our Leadership Summit, 9:00, at Central Florida College. And I know you all have invitations. So it is from 9:00 until 3:00. There is lunch being provided. But that is something that we are going to notice. I think, Mrs. Burdarami, you're going to notice it as a regular meeting, correct?
As a workshop.
And that will be, again, on Friday, January 19th, with our other elected officials. I understand, Mrs. Hemel, you'll be there this year, too. And so we'll all meet there at 9:00 to discuss any items of importance and just to have a good talk with our other leaders, yes.
It's just not talk about the homicide traffic in Falls River and Highway 19 construction. I'm so tired of hearing that. Or the Falls River Bridge, don't bring that up either.
I'll be, I'll be with Mr. Stevens in Orlando at a physical meeting.
Okay.
And Mrs. Burdarami knows to let.
Okay, to let them know. Okay, yes, if you all would just let Mrs. Burdarami know so she can respond for that meeting. And I don't know, I haven't seen an agenda. I don't know if we're going to get one, Liddedito. You know, one of the things, I asked the superintendent to overview. I think here today is going to be in the Kenton High School. You're going to have Mr. Bishop talking a little about that transportation plan, that backup plan. So I think we're going to hear that in just a minute. But certainly, if there are other items that we want to bring to the table, you know, that's a great opportunity to do it at that meeting. The January 23rd School Board Workshop is, we have some items that we're looking at. And we'll add to that also this policy review that we just discussed. But if you do have anything that you would like to have workshop, is there any idea? Is there anything else? I've got a couple of things that we've talked about with Health Department and vaccinations. Talked about the school improvement plan and the SAEC assignments and how that's going to work for next year. And then also a little bit on some security measures. Those are the topics we have right now.
Time certain at 9:00?
9:00, yes. 9:00 on the 23rd.
I'm going to leave this a discussion of, when Regina comes in and presents information to the students and give a direction. I'm not comfortable with that yet, so I'm going to discuss it again, see exactly what his plan was to do and see what he could then change.
But what, I don't understand.
Regina came in and talked, we talked about.
Gina's to read to us and not read herself.
But you have to make sure that we get all of the information that's presented. It's not skipped over, not put in a light light, sort of, how we always consider it. I want to be reassured we can have all that information so we can vote.
We haven't changed anything or provided.
Yeah, I'm saying.
Nothing's been changed.
Well, then I want to be reassured that that's case.
Well, we have time to discuss the. Yeah. I mean, we didn't have any expulsion hearings today, so. Yeah, really, that's a great thing. So at our February meeting, we can certainly make sure that we all are clear on that.
I think it's just a time thing because I know when we had to read it ourselves, it was easy to think of questions and things when Gina was reading to us. So then we had to read it ourselves and then also do that question process and stuff like that. So, and I think we hurried a little bit because we didn't want to be the, just like the little kid in the classroom, the last one to go to the test, you know.
I know you're right.
Have they, Gina wondered, say, "Do something a little bit different? See if you all want to read." But that was the time. And to say, "Right," so whatever.
And actually, when she does it, it does slow us down a bit.
Yeah, but it's. So we shouldn't be in a hurry about.
Well, I think she still reviewed the summary.
Yeah. But I think it might have just been feeling a little uneasy because it was the first time we had to really read, digest, and prepare questions in our thought process by ourselves.
She don't mind reading it. She is enough to all continue to read.
I like to save time.
Yeah, it's not so long. It gives you a chance not to miss it.
Well, we can certainly, you know, when we go to this next expulsion hearing beforehand, we'll just kind of go over again and make sure we're all clear on what's going to be read to us versus what we're going to review. But certainly, we all need to be clear on what the case is for us. Okay, so the.
Galaxy of Stars.
Yes, I have that, I have that down, too. Next, I had the Florida School Board Day in the Legislature. It's coming up February 7th through the 9th in Tallahassee. And in the past, we have met with our legislators. And I know, Mr. Bradshaw, you had advised that there was, I believe, no need to notice the meeting. But I want to make sure we're clear on how we're going to handle that again this year.
I'll give you a brief.
On the meeting with the, okay, so should we, there's not a problem with us going ahead and scheduling those meetings?
I think you have to schedule them one at a time.
Okay, individually?
I'll give you a brief.
Okay, that sounds good. So we can have that. And then I'll work with Mrs. Burdarami on scheduling those times to meet and how we're going to do that. Is, are all of you going to be at the legislative day? Everybody's planned?
Probably.
Okay. So that is.
Why I'm there now.
That is again February, yeah, Thomas, you're on the legislative committees.
Yeah, that's why I meet with them every Friday.
Right. Okay. Our next board meeting is scheduled for February the 13th. And the Galaxy of Stars banquet is on January the 25th, which is going to be at Central Florida College. Again, Mrs. Hemel, did you have anything on the Galaxy of Stars?
Just about.
Any questions about that? Okay.
So. Mrs. Burdarami, I need to bring up the rooms in Tallahassee because there are only four rooms left. And then they should go ahead and reserve two rooms at the lock. That means it'll be four, one, and three, and two. So we don't need this time.
And I think you were making contact with them. I know whether you emailed me today with some information.
Right, that's what you and Mrs. Peterson and SBA, she has no cancellations. And Doubletree has no rooms at all, not even if you pay the full price.
And we're on the, we're on a list, is that right now?
She's.
What, a waiting list?
She's anticipating cancellations. So people have already paid the registration fee.
How far away is the lock from the Doubletree? Couple blocks, just walking in.
There was one and two locks.
Yeah, it's not long.
Okay, we will. Okay, we will-
So y'all decide who wants to walk.
It's down by the bus station.
No, it's right on the road.
We have to go inside the bus station.
No. The bus station, you have to-
I know where the bus station is.
But you have to go down off the, turn left off the road and go down. The loft is right on the road. Now, it faces the street it sits on, but the edge of it's on the road. It's like a block launch center.
Okay.
I'll be up there next Tuesday, I'll measure.
No, just someone commented that- They need noise from the buses.
So how many of us have to go to the loft?
One or two.
But the people that are sitting on committees and-
I don't mind, it's only a block difference, so I don't mind.
Well, I was gonna, I mean, Thomas, you have legislative meetings.
Yeah, I don't mind. I mean, I can go to the loft, I have no problem.
I don't mind.
No, I don't mind.
I don't mind either.
No, I don't mind.
Then we'll need five rooms of loft.
All right.
Yeah, really, it's not hard for me.
Trust us.
Okay, the last thing that I had was kind of-
So do you all confirm the plan that we form where? And if she gets a cancellation, be up when she can.
Can we decide right now? Which side we're on?
Is that okay? Doubletree?
Doubletree.
Loft?
Loft. I'll take the Doubletree. All right. The last little thing that I had was something I thought would be kind of a neat thing for us as board members to do, not in a formal process, but kind of in a simple way to recognize exemplary behavior, or maybe with accomplishments or academic achievements, an outstanding performance, or just something small as we're out there, we're at all these different events, and, you know, with younger kids especially, it's kind of neat to point out something or give them an attaboy or something kind of fun. So I had purchased some inexpensive little medals here that I want to give you guys just as something, if you see something going on out there that you would like to recognize, just to put a little medal on somebody. And so, you know, again, it says, it says, "Citrus County All-American," so there's five there for each of you, so tape those, we'll just see, you know, what you guys think of it, and if there's a kid out there, he's carrying one of these medals in his pocket with him when you're out, out and about, and you say, "Hey, you know what, this is just a simple little thank you for what you're doing, you're an All-American, I mean, I think we're all about that, you know, as far as what we're trying to promote with our students." And, you know, it's, again, it's nothing formal, it's nothing they're going to put on their resume, or it's nothing, something that-
This is not necessarily just when we're at a school, it's when we walk into public and we see a-
Well, certainly, certainly, yeah. You know, if you want to point something out, I mean, it could be a student's attitude, their character, manners, just whatever, just a little something to say, "Hey, you know what, that's, you know, you're an All-American, you're a Citrus County All-American, I just want to recognize you." You know, it's, you know, everybody likes to be recognized, everybody likes to give a little attaboy, it's just something kind of fun, nothing, nothing real serious, but I just thought it would be something kind of that we might like to do or might have the opportunity to do, so.
Specifically for students, when I talk about adults?
Yeah, I was thinking students, right, yeah. That's what I was kind of thinking, in order to recognize little accomplishments or achievements or, you know, like, something. Okay, that's all I have. This is Hemel.
Nope. Good to go, Mr. Bishop. Did you have something you wanted to present?
An update to the board about the Locanto complex. Yeah, just ask the superintendent if we can have a few minutes to update the board on the progress that we're making toward the emergency ingress and egress of the Locanto complex. As the board knows, we brought before you in December the recommendation to work with the firm George F. Young out of St. Pete as our consultant to do the traffic study. We are not to the point of design yet, this is just to do the traffic study. The scope of the service is, at this point in time, what we're asking them to do is to analyze internal flow, traffic flow, and the internal implications of any off-site development that we anticipate in the area around the Locanto complex. We also are asking them to develop a short-term internal phase traffic solution, including conceptual construction budgets. In addition to that, we're going to ask them to look at some long-term implications and considerations that we need to take into consideration when we do this project. We certainly know that out there on 491, there, at some point in time, there's going to be some off-site developments. We want to make sure that we are good stewards of the money that we're using to fund this project. But our number one goal at this point in time is to come up with a study, traffic study, that identifies what our areas of concern are at this point in time, and to develop a concept how we move forward in the short term as well as in the long term. This morning, Mr. Stokes and I met with Jerry Debowski from George F. Young, had a great conversation, we kind of outlined a timeline. I would like to give you a generalized timeline as to where we're at with, up to this point, and how we move forward, if you don't mind, so if you just bear with me. As I said, we met this morning, our goal is to get from Jerry a consultant proposal to bring before the board at the February 13th meeting. We have tentatively scheduled a meeting with all the administrators on the Locanto complex, as well as, we're reaching out to Lieutenant Farmer, to make sure he's present there as well. So the consultant get feedback from those who are out there who deal with the traffic concerns on a daily basis out there at the complex. So we're planning on meeting with them in early March, right now we have it tentatively scheduled, we're earmarked for March the 7th. Then on May 21st, Jerry Debowski will provide to the staff here at the district a final report of the study that is conducted. The study does take between 90 and 120 days for them to complete in its entirety, and then our anticipation, we anticipate to bring before the board in June, the final study report. About a month, month and a half into the, into the study, Jerry, along with myself and Mr. Stokes, will be reaching out to our friends at E O C, EMS, and fire rescue to make sure we get their input and their concerns as well. Along the same, along the same timeline, we'll incorporate Mr. Dixon and county staff to make sure that what we are doing on our property will not be in conflict with what they're doing off-site. We certainly, while we certainly want to be good neighbors with our county partners, we do understand the limitations as our money's already spent on our property, we understand that. But we still feel there's benefit in having this conversation to make sure, once the off-site development takes place, what we've done on-site ties in very nicely. A few months back, myself, Mr. Dixon, and Mr. Burkall had an opportunity to meet with county staff, share with them what our thoughts and concerns were, they had some thoughts and concerns they shared with us as well. As we understood from that meeting, there is going to be a stoplight installed there at intersection 491 and Saunders Way. We certainly want to make sure that our plan for what we're going through right now will be conducive to any type of increased traffic flows as a result of that stoplight, that becomes a regular thoroughfare. This project is in its infancy, you know, for me to sit here and tell you exactly what's going to happen on one day, unfortunately, that just can't happen. This is a very slow process. We advertised for the consultant, the single consultant process we use, we had to advertise, we had to go through a selection process, that takes a lot of time. As you hear, the study's going to take between 90 and 120 days. Jerry's committed to doing as quickly, effectively, and as efficiently as possible, but he's still going to need a minimum of 90 days, so this timeline's kind of built around those number of days. We're excited about getting this project underway, but I assure you, we'll keep the board abreast of the developments as they go forward. We will, our goal is to make sure that you know everything we're doing, every step of the way.
Am I remembering correctly, several months back, planning and zoning denied a development because of the road, educational path was not accessible for their development because it was so crowded in our schools? Is that going to be a problem at all?
There was a, there was a request for development on that piece of property that rests to the west of the cable company out there.
And they had to come up with educational path, couldn't get the-
There were some concerns with traffic, there was concerns with the mine across the road, there was a lot of people had concerns, and so that was-
And denied them, so.
That is correct.
They still have commercial zoning, I think they wanted high-density zoning, there's the change. They still have, they still can-
That can be resurrected, actually.
And now, is the traffic light, that is in the county's plan right now, but we don't know for sure if that's going to go there, or are we pretty confident that it will be a light?
Based on the conversations Mr. Dixon, myself, and Mr. Burkall had with the county administrator, they said it's about five to seven years out, but they had anticipation, they completely, fully anticipated going on corner Saunders, 491.
Okay, that's great. Any questions? Thank you all very much.
Great, so we can arrange that part, we can go right there at yard.
Okay. Okay, with that, we're going to go ahead and adjourn this meeting, we have a public